Good evening.
This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Longini. I'm the Secretary to the Board of the Chicago Transit Authority. Before we begin the meeting, I wish to introduce our various interpreters. We have two sign language interpreters tonight. Paula Bloomberg, who will be starting at the beginning of the meeting, and will transfer back and forth with Rivka Hosinski. We also have a Spanish language interpreter, who will now say a few words, Maggie Garcia. Maggie?
She's muted.
Maggie, you're on mute, please.
You're muted. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Maggie Garcia, and I'm the Spanish interpreter for this evening. Please let me know when it's needed. Keep in mind, the meeting will not be translated in Spanish. Muy buenas noches. Soy Maggie Garcia. Estoy aquí como intérprete en español. Favor de avisarme cuando es necesario. Tenga en mente que la reunión no será traducida en español. Gracias.
We also have a, thank you, and we also have Tabitha Watson, who is our court reporter, who will transcribe this meeting. Notice was given that the Chicago Transit Authority Board desires public comment before it considers an ordinance to adopt the proposed 2021-2025 Capital Program of Projects, 2021 Operating Budget and Program, and the Financial Plan for 2022 and 2023. Virtual public hearing is being held tonight on Thursday, November 12, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., and will be held virtually only. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Arabel Alva Rosales.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, everyone. Muy buenas noches. I am Arabel Alva Rosales, Vice Chairman of the Chicago Transit Board, and I will be chairing tonight's meeting. I would like to welcome you to our annual public hearing on the CTA's proposed budget. I'd first like to begin by introducing my other fellow board members who are present tonight. Director Alexander Silva, Director Kevin Irvine, Director Reverend Johnny Miller, Reverend Bernard Jakes, and Director Judge Gloria Chevare. Welcome to all of you, and thank you for being here tonight. Also in attendance tonight is the CTA's President Dorval Carter, who's with us. Before we open the hearing up to hear from the public, we will first have a brief presentation on the 2021 proposed budget by our Chief Financial Officer, Jeremy Fine, who will make a brief presentation. Jeremy?
Thank you. I'm Jeremy Fine, the Chief Financial Officer for the CTA, and I'll give a brief overview of the 2021 budget. We're presenting on the next page a $1.6 billion budget with highly diverse revenue streams, but they are also all susceptible to economic factors. As such, and due to the essential service nature of public transit, the federal government awarded $817 million of CARES funding to the CTA. The CARES funding was critical to cover shortfalls in 2020, and we will have over $250 million to cover shortfalls in 2021. An additional $372 million of budget balancing actions are needed to close the remaining gap. This gap could be further exacerbated if the state were to further cut subsidies to the CTA. For the past several years, the state has cut public funding by $38 million a year, and further cuts to public funding could be enacted. While we're focused on revenues, I'd like to highlight our projections for 2021. Fairbox projections are down approximately 60% from 2020 budgeted levels, and public funding revenue projections, which are set by the RTA, are down approximately 25% from 2020 budgeted levels. Unfortunately, the 2021 marks are below 2013 levels. We've done a great job of tightening our belts over the past decade, and in fact, we have identified over $170 million of efficiencies since 2015 and over $330 million since 2010. Next page. The 2021 through 2025 Capital Program invests $3.4 billion in making major investments throughout the system. The funding sources to provide for our capital improvement program include federal formula, federal discretionary, state bonds, state paygo, and CTA bond funds. RTA has not yet allocated each service board's share of the fiscal year 2025 federal formula and state paygo funds, and the funds are set aside at the regional level until the RTA and service boards determine the allocation based on the performance-based programming initiative currently under development. The proposed five-year CIP recommends funding for a variety of capital projects and initiatives, which continues to invest in major rail line reconstruction, including the Red-Purple Modernization Project, the rehabilitation of the O'Hare Blue Line, including signal upgrades, constructing bus bridge at Harlem Station, and upgrading traction power, and the Red Line Extension to continue and complete the project development phase. It also provides for the procurement of new and overhaul of existing railcars and buses, and the program continues to invest in the All Stations Accessibility Program. It's also important to highlight that the American Public Transit Transportation Association, known as APTA, has noted that for every dollar invested in public transit, provides $4 of economic benefit. Continuing to invest in the Capital Program provides an economic benefit to the CTA and to the city. Thank you, and this completes my remarks, and I'll turn it back to Greg.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Paula, we can stay with you for a few more minutes before we transfer. We can now bring up our first speaker for the evening, Mr. Alan Melis. If you would please address the board and state your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I am Alan Melis. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Alan.
Yes.
You should have a copy of my testimony, so I'll try to do it quickly. First, I would like to thank Terry Peterson for his outstanding service as CTA Chairman, and wish him the best in his future endeavors. COVID-19 recommendations. The CTA should require the wearing of masks on all its buses and trains. This policy should be implemented by providing free masks and hand sanitizer. Total Disabled Accessibility. As our population ages, providing total disability access will assist not only the disabled community, but also our many senior citizens. While the All Stations Accessibility Program strategic plan is a great start, it means nothing, and I'll repeat that, it means nothing unless there is adequate funding. Funding should not only be a top priority, but any significant station improvements should be required, again required, to include full ADA accessibility. Excuse me. Chicago mega projects enhance CTA access. There are a number of major projects being planned, including the 78, Lincoln Yards, Michael Reese, and One Central. These projects will probably be the single greatest future source of additional CTA ridership. They should include new CTA transit stations like the 78 is doing, or additional bus routes, or at least more frequent service on existing routes. Providing metro service that primarily serves suburban riders does not substitute for CTA service that primarily serves Chicago residents. I have made two specific recommendations, and you have an attached map for the Lincoln Yards project that will have 5,000 new homes, 23,000 jobs, and new retail stores in its first phase. One, reinstalling the Clyburn bus route, and two, the establishment of a Sterling Bay-funded 24/7 free CTA shuttle connecting the Lincoln Yards project with the CTA's Fullerton and Armored stations. Transit-oriented development. Residential transit-oriented development. The TOD zoning bonuses only work if there is sufficient capacity at the transit stations. Either TOD bonus should be reduced along congested CTA routes, or developers should be asked to contribute to a fund to increase capacity since they're being granted TOD incentives. Business TOD. The CTA should work with Chicago, determine if there should be transit-oriented development incentives for businesses to locate near transit. Equitable TOD. The CTA should support Chicago's EOD policy plan, which, when implemented, should provide lower-income residents the same TOD benefits as its upper-income residents. Some additional items, as I conclude. Work with the North Lake Shore Drive Task Force to make sure some future light rail can be accommodated. Install more train arrival time signs that can be seen from all parts of the platform. I brought this up last year about the new Washington Wabash Station. On our new subway cars, eliminate the map in the center of the train because it is both too difficult to read, and replace it with the same signs indicating the next stop that are currently at the ends of each car. Also, and this really bothers me, when a train is rerouted due to emergency, have the ability to display the accurate next station. In closing, I would be remiss in not making another plea for the reinstatement of the Number 11 Lincoln Avenue bus. It is thoroughly missed by our communities, and will assist in the revival of the businesses when the pandemic is contained. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Alan. It's always good to hear from you.
Same here, Greg. Stay well.
Thank you, Mr. Melis, for your comments. We appreciate them.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next speaker, I believe it would be time to change our sign language interpreters, so I'll give that a few seconds, and we'll go to Rivka next. All right. I see Rivka on. Our next speaker is Mr. Charles Peddic. Mr. Peddic, if you would like to address the board, please do.
Hello?
Charles?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you quite well, Charles. Please address the board and state your name.
Okay, my name is Charles Pedoc, and I'm Secretary of Citizens Taking Action for Transit-Dependent Riders. My remarks will be eclectic, covering a number of issues. I, first of all, want to thank the board, the administrative staff, the operators, station agents, and mechanics for maintaining full service levels during this difficult period, and particularly during April, May, and June. Operating public transit with a policy of reduced passenger capacity is not an ideal situation. Nevertheless, I hope the ridership figures indicated on Pages 35 and 41 of the budget will not materialize, and passenger levels will return to some degree of normalcy. Next, I would like to thank the Finance Department for an excellent budget book. I've been reading these for over 25 years, and this is the finest one that I've had occasion to go through. I particularly appreciate the inclusion of historical data, such as found on Page 29, which enables one to follow situations over a period of time. I'd like to compliment on another issue, the CTA for initiatives, such as the Bus Crowding Management Initiative, and such creative approaches are credited to any transit system. I believe on another aspect, the performance measures, as indicated on Page 48, which are applied to each department and the personnel, perhaps have no relevance during this period. And our best aggregate figures regarding performance, they certainly do not have any degree of accuracy and are intended for periods of normal operation. We worked assiduously with the legislators to secure the $25 billion funding through the CARES Act, and recognize the $372 million shortfall, and are currently lobbying Congress for passage of the HEROES Act, and an additional $32 billion, which hopefully will forestall any adverse situations to the system. My only real recommendation is that the established financial funding program from '03 and '83 and '08 perhaps be held in abeyance, given the extenuating circumstances of operating during this period of a pandemic. Last of all, the most important figures I look at in the budget on Page 853, in which I see that the CTA is looking to maintain the number of bus stops at a level of 10,715. I believe that's the most important figure in the report. And maintenance of the revenue miles and hours of operation, in fact, shows some measure of increase. That's a positive outlook. Last of all, I am Secretary of the Chicago Greens, and I applaud the sustainability initiatives discussed on Pages 16 and 103, in which there's a transition, addition to the plate of 2023 electric buses or hydro buses. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pedic, for coming before us today. We really appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Charles. I believe that our next speaker is Mr. Charles Minor. So, Mr. Minor, please state your name and address the board. Thank you, sir.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Minor.
Well, my name is Charles Minor. I am just a private citizen. I stay in Morgan Park, and myself and my family depend heavily on the CTA. There's a few things that was a little concerning to me. First and foremost, I think we should be taking care of our bus and rail operators, and throughout the budget, I didn't see any mention of hazard pay or anything allocated for hazard pay for those employees. Security is a big concern of mine, considering my seven-year-old mother still rides the bus. And I would love to see CPD officers assigned, the ballpark number that I had in mind was like 225, where they would be assigned 40-hour work weeks to just mass transit. That would be their job. They police the bus, they can issue parking tickets, they will handle bus accidents, et cetera, taking some of the stress and strain off of the other Chicago police officers. I'm also concerned about the fact that we haven't yet started to renew or buy new buses. Our new flyer fleet, according to your records, are 14 years old right now. So that's two years past their useful life, so we should have already been in the process of replacing those buses. Crowding was a problem before the pandemic. Rideshare has been hurting mass transit. That's been one of the major complaints of any of my friends who have given up on mass transit was crowding. I think buying more Artix than we usually do by changing the formula. So we were buying 400 standard buses and 100 Artix buses. I think that number should change to, you know, just throwing a number out, 300 standard and 200 Artix. We need to do something to alleviate the crowding problem, some of the routes that can handle Artix. And other than that, I just want to say I appreciate you guys' service. I will sit back and listen to the response. Thanks for taking my call.
Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Minor, and we probably will have staff follow up with you. We have your contact information, and within the next couple of days, someone from the CTA will be reaching out to you specifically on your questions, which we have written down in transcript form. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I believe, is Jacob Arnoff. And so, Jacob, please state your name and address the board, sir. Jacob, are you there? Jacob?
If you could press star six to unmute your line.
Jacob, can you press star six to unmute your line? I would call him up, except he's not going to answer because he's probably on the phone talking. Let's just give it a few more seconds, and we'll have to move on. It seems that it's not going to work. I think we're going to have to move on then to the next speaker.
So Greg, we'll keep Mr. Arnoff in the queue. Speaker seven has apparently just dropped off, and we are on the line with Garland Armstrong. So if you can give us a minute, we're going to patch him in manually.
I will give you a minute. If Jacob ends up hanging up, I'm going to call him right up. I've got his number. Let's try calling Jacob up.
Hey, Greg, don't forget to mute yourself.
Sorry about that. No, I just got his voicemail. He's on the phone. So let us know when the next speaker is available.
So Greg, the line 3091 should be Garland Armstrong. Going to patch him in now?
Yeah, that's the number I know him by, but patch him in. We'll see who it is.
He was having trouble dialing, and so we patched him through our numbers. Mr. Armstrong?
Okay. Yes, Garland, are you there?
Garland, can you press star six on your phone to unmute?
Same problem.
Is there a way to text them?
Yeah, I'm going to text him right now. I'm going to mute, and he's calling in from a different number. I'm going to mute and call him. I'm going to mute and call him. Herb, I just spoke to him and I just said, I said, "Call back that six-eight-one number right now and we'll try to hook you in." And if you get him, make sure we try to tell him what he's got to mute that star six or whatever it is. So, I just told him to try calling again.
Okay, he's calling now. Standby.
Okay.
Mr. Armstrong, are you on the line? Can you you should be able to press star six now to unmute your line.
I will text him the same message. Garland?
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready.
Garland, oh, good, good. You're on the line. Great, thank you. Please state your name and address the board, sir.
Okay, thanks, Greg. My name is Garland Armstrong and I live in the northwest suburbs of Displayings, former CTA ADA Advisory Committee member. And I just would like to say about this budget right here to make sure it's accurate and fair, especially for our disability community, and we want to make sure that this budget will be an accurate one through 2021. And we want to make sure that the CTA has to make sure that no fair increases for our disability friends who takes the CTA more often because they really depend on this transportation and it's in full blood for them and it's their lifeline. And also too, my biggest concern is the safety on the tracks again, especially when I see on the text message that people are still doing the same thing on there. And President Carter, one day, can you make sure to have a data report on how many times people have been on those killer tracks for so long, from the date when they started all the way up until now, because it continues on and on and on. And we want to make sure that the data shows the fact that why people are still thinking about being on those killer tracks, even though we have the signs out saying suicide and other things too, but we don't know what the situation is and what are they thinking of. So, please make sure I have the data ready because they they're going to continue like this and God forbid that they're going to be killing them. They're going to be dead right there on the spot with major delays on the CTA rail service. And we don't want that to happen on and on in the near future and we want it to be exactly zero. That's the goal is to hit zero. So, nobody will never ever be on those killer tracks again. And I just wanted to say one thing for sure from the bottom of my heart, Greg Lugini, who is the best CTA Secretary of the Mall, it's long overdue for him to get Secretary of the Year award because he is a well-deserved secretary and he is one of a kind. And President Carter, one day before he retires, I think Secretary Lugini should get himself a deserving Secretary of the Year award before his retirement because he deserves it because it's long overdue for him and he should be well-recognized for it because he is an outstanding Secretary of the Mall and one of a kind and definitely in my heart, he is a good brother of me and I want to thank y'all and I'll keep you up to date on how our condition is and Greg is a great advocate for us and for y'all, I'm supporting y'all to make sure that CTA will rock on in the for these next years. So, I want to thank you and God bless y'all.
Garland, this is Arabell, the Vice Chair. I'm chairing the meeting tonight. We want to thank you. We agree with you with regards to Greg. We think fantastic and he keeps us all well on our toes as well, but we definitely agree with you. I'm sure President Carter agrees as well, but we want to thank you for all of your service, all your dedicated service for so long and for the advocacy for accessibility on our systems and all that you have done. So, we are very grateful to you as well. I want to open it up because I know there's a couple of other board members that know you that might want to make a comment, but we definitely agree with you and we'll keep an eye on the data that you mentioned. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, but again, thank you for your work. Are there any other board members that might want to make a comment with regards to Garland?
This is Kevin Urbine and Garland, just want to thank you again for your passion and your commitment to public transit and for your enthusiasm and for your love. And, you know, we're going to we're going to miss you and Heather if you make that move to Iowa that you're trying to make. And but the rise of virtual meetings, I know that you'll be able to stay stay close and keep tabs on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I will and all CTA has to do is call me whenever they have suggestions or if they feel like they need us, we'll come down as visitors one day and then we can see what is what. And if you have new ideas, just show it to us as visitors down the road.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Ditto. Amen.
Thank you, Garland.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Garland. We'll be in touch, don't worry. It appears I don't see any other. I'm sorry. Bye, Garland. Herb, it appears I do not see anybody else on the list right now, Chairman Alvaro Zalas.
Okay. So, we maybe break now for a little bit and just see if we have any other speakers coming?
I think that's probably a pretty good idea because, Herb, we had somebody who called in who dropped off, correct? And then Mary Sullivan had told me a couple of times, just spoke to her a few days ago, she was going to call in. So, why don't we take a short break here and then we'll be in touch to see and hopefully they'll call in if anybody else and then we'll go from there. Okay?
Thanks, Greg. How long of a break?
Maybe until a little bit before seven. Does that seem to make sense? Seems like an approximate time, given all an hour.
Okay, maybe a five-minute break, ten-minute break?
Let's do a ten-minute break and see where at let's see where at about around six, around six fifty or so.
Sounds good.
Six forty-five, six fifty. All right, we'll take a break until then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Alvaro Zalas, it appears that we have no more.
Excuse me, Greg, we have one caller that just showed up.
Okay, that's great.
I'm just going to enter them right now.
Okay.
Caller, can you unmute? One more time, star six to unmute and then you'll be able to speak.
Hi, this is Charles Pedoc.
What, Charles?
I've already spoken, thank you. I was simply rejoining the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Greg, that's all the callers we have in the queue right now.
Okay. Chairman Alvaro Zalas, all the people who had pre-registered to speak have now spoken. The people who have contacted me over the last week or so, either they have spoken or we have reached out, either they have spoken or they tried to speak to us and because they did not unmute themselves, we could not hear them. I will reach out to Jacob Arnoff again tomorrow and ask him to just simply tell me what he wanted to say to the board and I will write it down and transcribe it and communicate it to the board and to management. The other person who I had spoken to last week a couple of times, she has not called. I have tried calling her twice in the last few minutes and cannot reach her. And one individual who had called earlier to the open line that Herb had in the queue, she dropped out and Herb called her back and she said that she did not want to speak. And so, to the best of my knowledge, there is no one else who has contacted us who is now available to speak or has not turned down the request to speak. So, there is nobody else, it appears, that is waiting to speak to us at the hearing.
Okay, well, I think we're about ready then to wrap up.